Next we'd like to have our roll call.
Jerry Low.
Here.
Kevin Faulkner.
Here.
Bubba Edgins.
Here.
Al McKenna.
Here.
Jerry King.
Here.
Andrea Hollis.
Here.
Johnny Garner. Carolyn Higgins.
Here.
Ann Moore.
Here.
Dwight Bingham.
Here.
Renee Phelps.
Here.
Jerry Emerson.
Here.
Tim Crow.
Here.
Barry Smith.
Here.
Brenda Matthew. Todd Lewis.
Here.
Ricky Hardy.
Here.
Mike Alexander.
Here.
Seventeen brothers.
All right, thank you. Next we'd like to have the approval of the management September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, commissioning.
I make the motion, Mr. Friday. Good day.
I'll say it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Anne Moore and a second by Commissioner Jerry. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Tonight, we'll be sort of having a little different commission meeting. I'd like to ask for tonight's meeting certain procedures we go into using. I don't want to cause confusion or anything, but I'd like it to be ruley and everyone be able to have a voice. But first, we did not get an election of a chairman pro team. So I would like to open this up right at this moment for another nomination for a chairman pro team.
I'm at Tim Crow. Second.
We have a nomination for Tim Crow. Will there be any other nominations?
There was a second.
Well. A motion by Dwight Bingham and a second by Anne Moore. Being any other nominations?
I'm at Anne Moore.
We have a nomination for Anne Moore. Would there be any other nominations? If not, we'll take a roll call vote for.
For Commissioner.
I'm sorry. We have a nomination of Miss Anne Moore. I'm sorry, we need a second for that. We have a second by Commissioner Bubba Edgins. Now we will take a roll call vote. You would just express the name of the commissioner you would like to vote for.
Jerry Low.
Tim Crow.
Kevin Faulkner.
Tim.
Bubba Edgins.
Old.
Al McKenna.
Tim Crow.
Jerry King.
Tim Crow.
Andrea Hollis.
Anne Moore.
Carolyn Higgins.
Anne Moore.
Anne Moore.
Arne Kees.
Dwight Bingham.
Tim Crow.
Renee Phelps.
Tim Crow.
Jerry Emerson.
Anne Moore.
Tim Crow.
Arne Kees.
Barry Smith.
Tim Crow.
Brenda Matthews.
Tim Crow.
Todd Lewis.
Tim Crow.
Ricky Hardy.
Tim Crow.
Mike Alexander.
Anne Moore.
Tim Crow has ten. And Miss Anne has five. Tim Crow.
We have a majority, so Tim Crow is chairman pro team. Next, I'd like to explain the procedures for tonight. Tonight, we'll be considering the public comment policy for future meetings. Tonight, I want to explain as we go the public comments for this, on this agenda for tonight. Tonight also, I will explain the procedures without, we would like to go for tonight. First, on the item that has public comment or not, there will need to be a motion, a second, then discussion if needed. If Commissioner has a comment, please raise your hand and be recognized before speaking. And then after discussions, we'll be voting. And next on the agenda, I have public comment. What this is on right here, this is if someone doesn't understand what is being discussed on the agenda. So, tonight, if you want to make a comment, what I'm asking you to do is to stand up and be recognized. But just to be clarified, what is on the agenda tonight, if someone wants to make a comment, now would be the time. If no comments, we'll go on with our budget, approve the budget amendment amendments. We had a budget meeting last Monday, and all the budget amendments were given out. Schools and all the everyone else's amendments, and the recommendation was to approve. Since they went through committee, the committee that stands for the motion and the second. But each one of y'all have the amendments, and if there be any discussion now, now would be the time to ask for discussion. If no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the budget amendments? Next, we have a budget amendment. This that come up after the committee meeting. This is the purchasing of a county maintenance truck. It'll do away with the travel expenses that is incurred now by the county maintenance and the amount that he receives from his use of his personal vehicles. And this also will put us in compliance with a recommendation in the audit. Is there any discussion or question about this? This will be for eighty-four hundred dollars for purchase of a county maintenance truck. Right now, we're having to pay an allowance which amounted to last year, I believe, I'm correct, up to three thousand dollars for paying for personal use and mileage under our current travel policy. This would do away with it, and this is the recommendation of the audit for last year. This would be saving a lot of paperwork and keeping the mileage. He would be just using the county vehicle. He would have furnished his own way to get to the maintenance building, and then he would drive the maintenance truck.
So he wouldn't drive it home?
No, sir. He would be left at the maintenance building.
Was this something you had to bend your bolts on when the dealership opened?
Well, no, but I did have this vehicle checked out for my dealer, a used vehicle dealer, and he said it was well worth the amount of money that was asked for. This would be eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Might come back down?
Yes. Now, where is the money to come down?
It's an interdepartmental transfer within county buildings.
So it's a merger, not?
Yes. The law has a.
Any more questions on this? If not, we'll do a roll call. We don't have to have a roll call, anyway?
No, no, what I'm saying is we don't have a motion or a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion and a second?
Can I make a motion, Mr. Thursday, for?
We do have a motion. Purchase of the county maintenance truck. Do I, I'm asking for a second?
A second.
We have a second motion by Commissioner Andrea Hollis and a second by Commissioner Anne Moore. Any more discussion? If not, roll call now.
Jerry Low.
Sure.
Kevin Faulkner.
Yes.
Bubba Edgins.
Yes.
Al McKenna.
Yes.
Jerry King.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Anne Moore.
Yes.
Dwight Bingham.
Yes.
Renee Phelps.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Tim Crow.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Brenda Matthews.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Ricky Hardy.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Seventeen brothers.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, is there another budget amendment, budget amendment I can make there?
There's all.
All right, next on the agenda is the quarterly reports, and starting with the school system. I mean, if you put a "I" at the bottom there, that way we can do the double recording.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, this is the first quarterly report for this year. Included, you have your general purpose. You have your school federal projects. You also have central cafeteria fund, and finally, I say finally, you also have education capital projects. And finally, you have smaller fund on the last page reflecting the private interest.
We have a motion to go through the quarterly reports. We have a second. Mr. Kevin Faulkner. Any more discussion or questions for this quarterly report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the county highway department. Yes, the first thing is our quarterly report. Any questions on that? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kevin Faulkner.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Bubba Edgins. Any more discussion on the item of quarterly reports? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other things?
Yes, I've got, I have two more things to discuss. I've got the Woodville Creek claim, which is out of Woodville. Now, Moore has requested that he remove the road this, and he would maintain it for now.
Motion to approve your question. Turn that around.
Uh, Woodville Creek claim. We have a motion to approve the taking off, road off the Kennedy Drive. By Commissioner Tim Crow and second by Al McKenna. Any more discussion on the taking off of this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next thing I have, we have three trucks, and I was wondering, yeah. Give them to the service desk now. Lot of names on the board out there.
Mike, why should we approve the sale of the truck?
We have a motion by Commissioner Anne Moore to approve the sale of the truck and a second by Commissioner Jerry King. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the next quarterly reports, these was also discussed in the budget meeting. The trustee, the general, the solid base, and I believe the library also. But if anyone in that, them offices would like to speak, you can come up, the trustee, Gary with the county general, or Andrew with the solid base. If y'all would like to speak, then we'll leave your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Somebody need a simple report again, or ask a question in the comments?
Does anyone have a question or comment for the trustee on his report?
How does taxes work, y'all? One person. We closed in October at about fifty-four, fifty-five percent collected for two thousand twenty-three taxes. Of course, that's the only issue for the almost two-seventh, ten to third. We're very excited about that. Seven-two percent discount. Because the parish companies in, and lots of folks still want to take advantage of that two percent discount, so we appreciate that. Any other questions?
Any other questions? This being already through with the budget committee, that recognizes the motion and the second. So all in favor for the quarterly reports of trustee's office? I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, if there be anyone for the county general, that was also went over through the budget meeting. Commissioner Gary is here, if there's any questions on the county general report, he is here to answer them. If not, it went also through the budget committee and was approved, which counts as a motion and a second. If there is any question on that, you'd be able to ask it now. There being none, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second, which I already have that in the budget committee. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the solid base department. Anyone has any questions with the, about the solid base? If not, it went also through budget, and we have a motion and a second for that county. So is there any question? If there's not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the Chester County Library. That also went through the budget meeting and was approved and second. Would there be any questions or discussion on the library's report? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the Chester County Fire Department. I believe he.
I don't have anything since I'm at all, certainly any questions for me, pardon.
Okay, if anyone has any questions to ask about the fire, county fire department, now would be the time. Thank you. Next, we have the Chester County Coast Department. Dionne, he's still off, Dionne Davis is still off right now because of a car accident. He's not been released by his doctor or the physical therapist yet. But he did provide us with a quarterly report, I believe that I put each one up in his packet. This gives his quarterly report for June, August, and September. He's not here to answer any question, but if you have a question, now write it down, and I'll be sure I get the answer to it.
I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner Karen?
Is he certified yet?
No, he's still got the one certification, but hasn't took the test as of this time.
How much longer are we going to give him to get certified?
Tomorrow night, we have a planning commission meeting, and that will be in the corner of discussion tomorrow night. So, everyone, the planning commission meeting is at the city hall over here tomorrow night at six o'clock. If anyone would like to attend it, and there'll be a training session, and we'll be going over topics in the building, and some.
How much farther we go though? How do the holder give him certification once it's completed with?
Well, in the past, it was, he was supposed to be scheduled, and since this break he's had, it's been, he's been out now for weeks. I talked to him this morning, and he don't know for sure when they're going to release.
Can he not do those tests on the computer to get certified?
On the test, he, the state has contacted me, and they're wanting to discuss things with him after I met him tonight. So, but they wanted him to be back at work, but I will contact and discuss.
I don't know that we can ask him if he's on medical, he could get that. He's on M F M L, yeah.
Yes, and he's on M F M L, and the doctor's here, and he's listening, yes. Just had to leave it like that for this present time.
I got another question. How much longer are we going to give him to get certified? How much longer are we going to give him to get certified? He said for two years.
That will be, we discussed tomorrow night. Everyone, you have his quarterly report? So, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second on his quarterly report and approve what has been done his last quarter.
So.
We have a motion, Commissioner Renee Phelps, like a, a second by Commissioner Jerry Emerson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have the Chester County Emergency Medical Services. I was fixing to announce, Mr. Joyce Knowles, but I see it's not the official.
No, it's, it's not yet, it's not Bobby, it's, uh, okay. Yeah, so the quarterly, quarterly volume report for EMS, I've got some numbers here for you, and in the future, I've got some more right now, I can give this to you all. The, for the first quarter, for the three months of July, August, and September, we had eight hundred and eighty-two full responses. Five hundred and sixty-three emergency calls.
If you're going to hand that to me, hand that?
Yeah, I have one, single one, I'm going to make a copy.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll get it better. Okay, I'll get the Q and A for a little time. Okay, my apologies. I'll stick slowly so you can get these down. Five hundred and sixty-three of those eight hundred and eighty-two responses were emergency responses. Three hundred and nineteen non-emergency responses. A hundred and five supervisor responses. Six hundred and fifty-seven of those were patient transports. Two hundred and twenty-two responses in the city limits of, oh, sorry. Two hundred and twenty-six responses in the, outside of the city limits in, in, uh, Chester County. Fifty-three responses in Madison County. Sixty-three responses in McNairy County. One hundred and thirty-four responses by either Madison County and excellent McNairy County that's coming into Chester County to assist, with Chester County calls. And lastly, fifty-three discharges from Dacty General bringing ten, uh, Chester County residents back to Chester County. Again, I have those same numbers divided into each, each monthly, uh, July, August, and September, and I can make you probably that.
I would recover too.
Yeah, yeah. We'd all like to have, yeah, absolutely. They take numbers, by the way, for the next. Definitely, I'll make sure I bring you that, or even email, how about y'all, whatever best y'all can do for y'all.
If you give the email to me, I'll.
Okay, I'll get your email. I have a question to show, and how much, how much money did they score again, all these calls? Uh, I would have to be back to you as far as the financial portion of, uh, from, from me, as far as the financial portions of that. I'm an operations manager, so I directly deal with all operations and streets, but I can't give anything specific as far as that goes, the income, how much does that bring in? I can get that, get that back to you next, next meeting.
How did that number of calls compare with the, the share?
Um, so I can get that as well, I can compare you weekly each month, and we'll write, I know I just got the report for October, which is not part of this quarter, uh, since July, August, and September. Uh, this morning, I was looking at that email, and the projected calls we had was exactly within, I believe, one call, so two seventeen versus two eighteen. For these three, uh, months, July was three hundred and twelve calls, August was two hundred and ninety-seven calls, and September was two hundred and seventy-three. All of those are pretty much in the ballpark, considering the transports are right around that two hundred mark. Any other questions? I'll make sure each of you gets this back for a copy, and then I'll get some more financial specifics for the next meeting.
Appreciate it, everybody. We made a, a report, he'll make us copies, we'll make a couple of copies.
Y'all want to see this before we review it, or we just get you the copy for later?
Later.
Motion to approve your report.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tim Crow and a second by Commissioner Kevin Faulkner. Any more discussions or questions that he might need to ask? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have the approval of county meeting policies. Uh, we have the adoption of the county meeting procedure policy in town. I wrote that out and was going to present it, and I was presenting with another possibility, which I would like to check into before presenting this procedure policy. And, uh, some, most of the counties in middle Tennessee are going to this already, and, uh, there's a few counties scattered around, it's going to, it's called open meetings. And it is just another way that could help us in our proceedings, in our county proceedings. It is a, uh, procedure that would require training, which we will get together if it be possible and feasible. It is a, uh, procedure that would require training, which we will get together if it be possible and feasible, uh, that we can get together and have it explained to us, and see if it would be right for our county commission to lead. Next, I, I would like to adopt a public comment policy. All of you have been provided with a, uh, comment policy, and I, since I presented it to the budget committee, I have added one revision to it. It is known, and I'll go over this for the public. This is Chester County Public Comment Policy. This is what we're trying to implement in the past, will be for our future meetings, but tonight, we'll do as, uh, we advised at the time of the item on the agenda. First, the agenda for any budget meeting that includes actionable items, we reserve one or more opportunity for public comment. This opportunity may consist of a single comment period for all actionable items, or separate comment periods for each. Two, actionable items are agenda items requiring a vote, except for procedural votes such as adopted minutes, determining necessity, or voting to adjourn. Reports and updates are actionable items, but they're not subject to, uh, public comment. Public members will be allowed to comment on an actionable item before a vote on that item. Now, four, public members may indicate their desire to comment by filling out a form for the meeting and submitting at least one business data before the meeting to the Chester County Mayor's office. Favor to do this might result in inability to com- comment publicly. Specific instructions will be provided in advance for each meeting. The speakers are limited to two minutes per person, comments may not yield time to each other, or can extend that period. Speakers will identify themselves at the beginning of their allotted time and include their affiliation, this is required. Comments shall be limited solely to actionable items on their agenda. Speakers will respectfully conduct themselves and be removed if they engage in threatening or disruptive behavior. Majority vote of the Chester County Commission may extend the opportunity for the public to comment. If an actual item, items are presented in other business, before the county commission votes, the public will be allowed to comment. However, the number of comments will be at the discretion of the chairman. This is what I presented, all except that last one, it has been added. Getting something down, because the state has now mandated that each county commission meeting have a public comment time. And to have hours to recognize where each one will know how to follow the rules, that is the reason I would like to continue this policy. It might be meant to be revised in the future, but I would like to start with this. And I, I would like with this, I'm presenting this to the commission.
Oh, and for the board, you're saying they need to present at least one business data before the meeting?
If possible, but now, if it's something that is on other business and not presented on it, because we, we put out the agenda at least two weeks prior to it, we tried to put it in the county paper and on the well page. That way, if you know that you want to make comment at that time, you will have plenty of time to give it to us, where we can account for our time, where our commission time won't last for hours. And, but if it is a, a topic that needs more discussion, that will be allowed, that, that each, each item will be adjusted.
I'm thinking there may be some people that may not realize that they're talking upon the comment, maybe until the day of the meeting, or until they get into the meeting, there's discussion.
Well, that, that is the reason, you see, at the end of our comment period, I'm also going to try to ask for a, if the rules of time about public comment at the end.
Meaning after we vote?
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, if before any, uh, item that is actionable, that the commission will vote on, I'm going to try to have a public comment time before that vote. You understand, you understand?
Yeah, I'm weak there, yes. But what are you saying?
It will only be for the item to be talked about at that time. It won't be on another subject, it only be for the item.
I agree with you there, yes, okay. But I, I, I'm still not clear on my support, yes.
That's, that's the one I'm struggling with, I'm one hundred percent believe that meetings ought to be presented in a fair and civil order. I'm struggling with the people having to come and sign a commission to it before the meeting, you know, a lot of counties have adopted policy where people signed it, denied it, or allowed to speak. I, that's, that's where I'm struggling, I'm, I'm not against the cost, but I'm struggling, I'm, I'm afraid we're setting people up for fail, because if we had had these rules a few months ago, they're probably getting burned out here.
Right.
And I'm just afraid that people's gonna come in, people's gonna come in and want to talk, and they're not gonna be able to, and they're like, object to talk, and they're gonna get yourself in trouble, that are gonna make it too hard for them. That's, that's the one I'm, I'm struggling with.
Well, the, the reason I, I put it that way is if you know in advance that you're wanting to speak, that doesn't mean that you will not be allowed to speak, that just means if you know in advance, I would like to have notice of it, and maybe even receive the names, uh, where I can plan the times out. But we're also, I believe they're out here on the table, uh, we're gonna have, uh, sheets that you can fill out for a comment, if you want to in the future.
Okay, but it says, it talks about the public's interest in the case, if they decide to come in, but then, if the, on the last sentence, it says favor to do so will result in inability to comment.
It could, yes. It's going to walk through, if you had three or two, and you were, it's gonna be allowed at the time, or you feel like the sheets for it, and you come in here and you want to decide to speak, and we're only gonna have, we're not gonna...
I, I understand, but I think what you're saying, and what this actually says is a little different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would feel more comfortable with coming in than someone coming in.
Okay.
Because if I were coming in, there may be something I didn't realize that I wanted to come in on until this, there's some discussion, but...
Now, I got this, I, 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 I mirrored this off two of one's comments, and this is what they stated it did. Matter of fact, they had more than one day, but I, I thought one day would be sufficient, knowing that they had two weeks notice. It was like, I know what you're saying, if you get in here and other people get this discussion, they might think of something at the time, but, I mean...
But I think, because one place says may, one says it will result in the inability to comment, so it just comes with it.
Well, I, I will, we'll work on straightening that out, but I want everyone to realize that, I know this won't be good for everyone, but I'd like to get something started before we can start having a, uh, still, let everyone have an opportunity to speak, but it might be hard to let seventy-five people speak.
I agree.
That's what, that's the reason that I was wanting to, if you know it beforehand, I'd like to have advanced notice. So if y'all want to table this, this to be found, you will decide to reword it.
I'd like a motion to be tabled.
And will you represent with number nine on that, so if you don't want to?
I'm sorry.
How do you take the red?
And you add it there.
Red, red, red. We said, we did a tactic, we got, uh, we did a tactic, we got, you know.
Okay, uh, we have a, uh, we have a...
I, I know that I'm...
We have a motion to table, Commissioner Tim Crowe, and sent it by the, 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 the... Everybody in the room with the table, say aye. Any opposed? We'll go back in and... We're going to try to come up with a better solution for the, uh, for the policy. Thank you. All right, next, like, right now, we're, we're going to allow public comment, and it's to discuss the table request to move the boundary off the church, school, from two thousand feet to five hundred feet regarding purchasing beer. And I would, I plan to allow three comments for each side with a time limit of two minutes. I have already been contacted and have three that is asked to speak. And at this time, we'd be allowed to have them speak, uh, first being, uh, Pat Conner. And if you would, uh, there's a, um, a microphone there, that, that table. Sorry, but we'll...
Well, good evening. I'm here representing and spoken for Mission Baptist Church tonight, and as well as many citizens of Chester County, uh, with signed petitions. And you do have a copy, I think, of the churches in the Mission community, uh, which are Mount Pleasant Church, New Friendship Church, Pride Point Church, and Mission Baptist Church. Now, that we have, we have much more, many more petitions, and I knew time wouldn't permit us to read or go through them, but if you want to see them, I think we got pretty much county code in that, so, uh, but we do have more, if you want to see the copies, if you're willing to, we just want the copies back, if you want to look at the, the rest of the petition. And, uh, but first of all, I do want to thank the mayor and all the commissioners for allowing us to, uh, present our, uh, rec, the, for us, uh, to present our objection, this, uh, law on the distance from the church, churches and schools for the purpose of beer sale and permit. The present law is, uh, the request is to change five hundred feet. This law was, uh, we have now, was made our fourth law for, for a reason. And of course, this won't just affect the Mission Baptist Church, but could affect all churches and schools in Chester County. For a little history on Mission Baptist Church, it was started in nineteen fifty-two in the mission, there's been a church building since nineteen fifty-four. Fire destroyed the first building, was rebuilt in nineteen fifty-six, and before that, uh, before nineteen fifty-four, there was a Baptist church and the old Mission Elementary School there. I said to that, say this, the church was there when the store that is making this request was built, it was there when it was sold, and it was bought. And we have voted at the Mission Baptist Church, and a businessman with a hundred percent voting against, uh, this request, uh, to change that law. And we want to say, we don't have anything personally against the one that's making this request, our's is a moral issue, and what God will think about it. I want to read just a little, maybe in time to permit, uh, a couple of verses from what God thinks about it. In Proverbs twenty and one, it says, and I will read, wine is my drink, strong drink is raging, and whosoever is deceived thereby is not wise, end of the verse. And I know there's a tax revenue concern for some people, and, uh, we might gain that, but what does God think about that? I want to read two more verses on that, in Romans, the first chapter, if you want to read that whole chapter, it covers a lot of evil things in there, but I want to read a couple of verses. And, uh, Romans one eighteen says, for the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodless, and then skip down to, for the same time, the verse thirty-two in the same chapter. Who knoweth the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them that do them. You know, somebody, these people that, uh, we might feel good about renting, uh, but if, and let somebody else pay their taxes, but if we have pleasure in that, that may be, it can stink. Uh, anyway, we do thank you for your time and, uh, and consideration, and like I said, we'll see, uh, more petitions we have. Thanks.
I've got, uh, a petition that's probably placed five hundred and ninety on this, that's decent, so, I'm a hundred percent against it, I'll say it.
Next, we have, uh, on the comment, Brother Ronnie Gitt. I'm sorry, it was a little bit of a hand, I was cleaning.
That's horrible for a church. And I was gonna say, I appreciate you, Larry, the commissioner, allowing us to say something, and this, the whole body, if we make breaks, we did talk to y'all, but this is not, I hate to say it, but I will say this, uh, I agree with everything that Pat said, and, and I appreciate what she said, and it's very, uh, but we are here also to encourage you to vote against this. Looking around, I, I pretty well know all of y'all, I got a son and a mom, two turkey hens up here, and friends, it's all across this thing, and I have confidence in y'all. He mentioned taxes, somebody broke my pension a while ago, but I didn't think about it, but, you know, you've got X number of people in Chester County, or other counties that come in, and I appreciate the one who gave me this information, I had to think about it, I said, you're not gonna bring this up, uh, you've got X number of people who are gonna come into the county to buy beer. So if you add the stores, all you're doing is dividing, you're not adding extra taxes. And there's a lot of people that's not gonna buy beer in Chester County, it don't matter if, if they live here, because it'll all might seem. So, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna bring them that much extra tax revenue, because all this good is taken away from one beer store to another. It's not gonna call me to go buy beer, uh, if you pull one next to my house, live in the county, vote in the county, pastor Teddy Springs Baptist Church, this could be Teddy Springs. I appreciate the mission standing, we're just standing, and I just encourage y'all to, and I encourage you not to just take it, say, let's pass it on, put it in a ballot, to vote, let, keep passing this thing down, let's end this thing, that's the worst line. Uh, we, we've, you know, I'm not here to hurt somebody either, but what's right wrong from, and we just like to encourage you to vote no on this matter, and put it to an end, two thousand feet. Our, our children, you've got, uh, Tax Creek Elementary School out there, there's a little building that's empty out there that could start selling beer. Right there next to us could have an actual tonight, but when the door is open, and then you've got, there's churches all around, daycare centers would be included in this, our children, you know, if it costs one life, would you want it to be your son, your daughter, or your grandchildren? I don't want to have it, but I don't have it here too, I don't have it nobody else, and nobody would do that on purpose. But there are certain things that will affect this, certain things happen, and so, tonight, thank you for allowing us to come and speak to you, uh, I'm trying to just put mine, trying to have a package deal, and so, we just encourage you to do the right thing, please vote no on this thing, it's been... It's been this way, Kate Springs, some years ago, about eighteen thirty-five, it's been there a long time, and so, we encourage you, please, to vote no on this. Uh, we would appreciate it, people that you represent, you're here because you're representing this district, and people have confidence in y'all. And I know y'all have a hard job, this time, you know, you're going to affect some of the bodies sometimes, kind of like a preacher, believe me, I made a book for him before, uh, you know, but, for the time, we just have to do what's right. Yeah, and, uh, we'll talk about you.
Next, we have, uh, public comment for Superintendent Troy Keel.
Good evening again, I just want to also echo the sentiments that's been shared over the last two gentlemen. Again, Chester County is a unique place to live. We serve our community well, I believe our school system, um, by the leadership that we have, by the school folks who work every day with our kids. It sets us apart when you compare our county schools to other county schools or areas. And the decisions made many years ago about the current boundaries, I feel like are consistent and need to be consistent now. So I ask you to consider, again, just like the two and three gentlemen said, to give our opportunities for our schools to operate safely and securely, as we have for several years in the past, and will continue for several years in the future. Thank you.
Having three comments opposing the request of moving the boundary, uh, I'm going to allow up to three comments for yes. Would anyone want to, uh, make a public comment for, uh, for it? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, I understand where a lot of folks are coming from, being against this, but if they're that against it, why aren't they not already trying to drive out the county? To say that two thousand feet is okay, but five hundred is not. Uh, just say, for instance, this courthouse is a church, and my store located at Four Way Stop, we wouldn't have had this discussion because I would be looking at clients. But since my store falls in Metso's, I'm not going to sell it. I still see what the little extra distance matters, uh, which I'm not allowed to sell it on Sunday, it's still packaged beer only for all purposes. And this has nothing to do with any of the city limits, this is just county only. Currently, there are two stores that this will pay, which were Matt and the one in Botswell. Uh, changing this rule wouldn't allow the stores to sell packaged beer, it is going to create more consumers that is already here. People who choose to drink are going to direct regardless of whether they have it. Right now, in the northern part of the county, they're going across county lines to buy a point grocery. In the past, I estimate the extra tax revenue for my store to be anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two thousand. I've also got a petition signed by roughly two hundred and fifty citizens that are in agreement with this to be changed. Not only will this break more revenue for the county, at no expense to the citizens, but it'll also help the future of these small community stores. Thank you.
Thank you. That being one comment, four, uh, allowing up to two more comments, if someone would like to come up and speak for the proving of changing of that. If not, uh, might you entertain a motion or request for... Moving on the boundary?
I make a motion to the boundary states in two thousand feet.
I'm certain. We have the motion to leave the boundary at two thousand feet by Commissioner Tim Crowe and the second by Commissioner Jerry Emerson. Like to entertain a roll call vote? Oh, any more discussion? Question?
I'd like to say something. Please let me know if I'm wrong on this, but it doesn't just affect the, that's my district, but it doesn't just affect my district, it affects whatever decisions made here tonight, it's county law. So it's not just going to affect Mission, if, uh, whatever.
Is we're just setting the boundary for the whole county?
Yes.
Any more discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Jerry Love?
No.
Kevin Faulkner? Lee Bubba?
We're voting to leave it.
We're voting to leave it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, well, it's, uh, so if you vote no, you're going to change it.
That's right.
You don't want to vote that way, do you?
Yes.
The motion is to leave it like it is.
Leave the boundary at two thousand feet.
Let's start over. Jerry Love?
Please, like, please.
Kevin Faulkner? Bubba Edg?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Jerry King?
Yes.
Andrea Holland?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Dwight Bingham?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Renee Felton?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Tim Crowe?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Brenda Matthews?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Ricky Hardy?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Seventeen in favor of leaving the site.
Thank you. Better, the state is, is now two thousand feet. Next on the agenda is the approval of the contract of the State of Tennessee on the Tennessee College of Hawaii Technology, with a TCAP facility for us to lease the buildings to them. Very, very good.
We're going to lose that rent, we're getting from that?
Yes, that rent will go up to TCAP. But, and if anything, we're going to get a dollar a year. Well, yes, we'll be able to, what we're doing is contracting it to them where they can provide more services and more classes, and our ability to add on, uh, and help our, people in the county make it provided with more types of education, and ways to provide, making income for their families. It's where we can expand our classes.
But we're still responsible for heating and air?
Only half, if, if a unit goes wrong, they're taking everything as is, but it's because the units are, uh, the aides they are, they're wanting the county to be responsible for half of the expense on the units.
Now, you just think that's just existing units, right?
Yes, that's just the existing units.
But there's not, we're trying to be responsible for bringing it to the ID.
None of the utilities or...
That would be good on the maintenance house.
Do, do we know what we're, Gary, do you know what we're paying a month in utilities out there now, so we, so we kind of see what the call statement says versus what we're losing from there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can look it up, I don't know, I'm here, sorry.
I believe the total of the last year on all of them is around thirty-three thousand.
So you tested it, thirty-three thousand, and we're getting four hundred dollars a month, right? Five, so, we're getting six thousand, and we're spending thirty-three thousand.
And this lease will be for thirty years, and they already have some, possibly adding two more classes.
You should have, utilities just loaded through it now, so that's...
I believe that's why our budget comes for last year.
Oh, that's what, that's how it is.
That is a project of all the counties.
All the counties that were spent two...
Oh, I thought I missed that, that's a bill.
That's all the counties.
For the, now, the county, I mean, for the TCAP facility.
Oh, yeah, the TCAP, also, is that...
That was, you know, what we spent, maintenance and all, I believe that was what we done...
Oh, maintenance and all, oh. Not just the regular build, like, systems and all that.
So you're thinking we spend thirty-three thousand?
Any more discussion? None, you're, you're really, you're helping us in time.
Did you figure out, uh, when we asked you about the, uh, warning?
Uh, I, I called and asked them if they would send it to legal, uh, when I called them back today, they seemed to have none of the instructions from legal, but he said that they are supposed to, uh, if, when they're taking care of the, the standing of it now, they're supposed to leave it in its good or better standing than it is now, or whenever they have to.
So, is this money going to be the bear, is that the thirty-year lease, the duration, is that the first ten years?
Uh, there, there was no specific comment, it was for the, the lease, for the, the units that serve now. Yes, sir.
So if those units get replaced, then that changes everything, whatever they have?
Yeah, now, the new units, that should be there.
Who determines, who wants to? Who determines when we really can replace units? That we can pass on?
They, uh, the TCAP has their own maintenance people and all, and I would say they would... He was here the last two commission meetings to answer questions, and he couldn't make it tonight. So, they've changed the dates only twice, so...
How, how will we all order to play them?
Well, the only thing we're taking care of maintenance is half of the heating and air units, everything else is their responsibility, cleaning the floors and everything. Anyone like to make a motion to do that?
I'd like to motion, please, that, that, that.
We have a motion, big sir, by Commissioner Al McKinnon.
I'm sure.
And the second by Commissioner Andrea Holland.
Uh, just keep it inside.
Now, any discussion?
Okay, so it says, uh, state shall have no need for any privileges placed by you, all the lease premises are to be restored, any portion of the lease premises offered by you, say, accept, in the event the state decides to remove such a privilege or feature. So they can remove something that they...
If they, if they move a portable building out there, they have a right to remove it as long as it's in a good, uh, condition as it is right now.
But not access to the building itself?
Well, he, legal didn't get that with me, but it is into them, uh, but he said, uh, he couldn't see anybody that they added onto the building in front of them, him turning it down. But a portable building or something that has been added to the property, he simply might move it by January, uh, uh, contract, this side.
Well, one thing, when we originally voted to build that building, city was involved in the county, and there was a statement in there that said that after so many years, we would give it to the state, and they would maintain it, it would be their property to that of...
That, that's what I had been told, but I tried looking, finding it, and I couldn't find it anymore. But when I sent this contract to the city, the city wanted to just give their portion to the county and leave it up to the county, because we had, the county had been the one to always maintain the building ever since it was built. Alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We're going to do a roll call, now, what, uh, the motion is to, uh, approve the contract, the third year with TCAP facility.
So we still have to maintain the building?
No, we don't maintain anything, the only thing we're supposed to help on is pack the, the central heating and air units if they go out, because of the aides, they, they asked that the county to pay half. Right now, if anything went out, we'd be furnishing all of them.
Good.
But this lease can't be terminated if we say it's been there some years?
And he, he did say that, well, they could take your insurance in for a career.
I believe, yeah, we, we still have a...
Yeah, I think they can come back and go back open this for us.
We still, we still, well, if the county's building, the counties, we would still need to keep insurance on them. But we have, I would have, on it, too.
So, so, you want to motion, yes, sir?
It's starting to flow.
The other buildings, we've got lease this way, that we keep insurance on those?
Yes.
So if they don't move everything out, they'll pay, they're going to pay it, uh, from...
No, they're, they're going to add more classes here and, uh, add to their, they, uh, they have two classes, he mentioned them, but I can't remember what they are by now, they're planning to do more here and working with the school, they're planning to help Chester County have a lot to provide, uh, ways where I'm used to, have better income. Alright, we're going to get to... Roll call.
Jerry Love?
Yes.
Kevin Faulkner? Bubba Edg?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Jerry King?
Yes.
Andrea Holland?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Dwight Bingham?
No.
Renee Felton?
No.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Tim Crowe?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Brenda Matthews?
No.
Todd Lewis?
No.
Ricky Hardy?
No.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Eleven and five, Republican.
Thank you, motion. Next on the agenda, uh, to approve the Chester County Health Department's request for qualifications, uh, for the renovation of the health department, we had two, we had put in for the qualifications on it, and T L and E L, associates were selected and wanted to, uh, uh, remodel the health department, a hundred grand. We have a motion and a second to... Of course, there's a... T L and...
Motion is set.
Do we, do we, so, please? Do I, do we have a motion for a stage?
This was done through the health department, and we did, we did, uh, huge order.
I would say, uh, six parts of the community.
Your, your, your...
Yes.
Yes, purchasing community did, it was, uh, went through, uh, qualifications to purchase, so that did do away with the motion and the second. So what we will need to do is just put on, uh, we will use T L M. We are getting a roll call vote?
So you understand Jerry committee recommendation to use T L M?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry Love?
Yes.
Kevin Faulkner?
Yes.
Bubba Edg?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Jerry King?
Yes.
Andrea Holland?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Dwight Bingham?
Yes.
Renee Felton?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Tim Crowe?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Brenda Matthews?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Ricky Hardy?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Seventeen in favor.
Okay, thank you. Next, we need to approve the additional committees, uh, this being the audit committee, and the report to the program committee, which is the same... and the board to the playground community, which is the same as, uh, left off, the name Jason Cherry and, uh, uh, Fairground.
Motion, Pippa. Black.
We have a motion, we have a question about Commissioner Phil Felt, we have a question about Commissioner Alan McKinnon. Any discussion on this committee? What are the things, Fair? We're fixing to do some projects out there and getting these problems, we have a meeting to discuss them. We already, we have two grants to go out there for building of an arena. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have other business. In this other business, we have, uh, two requests to speak. Uh, one, the first one being the election commission, and the next one being the management awards. Ms. Calwist is going to present the election commission and the four, uh, recommendation in front of the line.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I appreciate having this opportunity to come back and speak to y'all once again about, uh, the needs of Chester County Election Commission. You will recall, this is the, uh, one project that was not funded, and, um, so we're looking at, we're continuing to look at options for this. Uh, I had an opportunity to be a national last week at a law conference, and, um, I was reminded how important this is. Our Secretary of State, Governor, um, State Board of Elections, everyone, um, is very excited. For the sake of here in a row, Tennessee has been named number one in election integrity for the United States, um, as part of the National Secretaries of State Association. So no one is wanting to take any chance on anything happening that not, not happening again. So, um, you know, we talked about some of the things like, when, um, like in our last August election that we had, August of 2022, 18% of the voters had, we had to stop and open up the machines to release a paper jam. And so just think about, if you're standing in line, you don't know any of this is going on, and you repeatedly see workers coming over and opening the machines, what are you thinking? You're thinking someone's tampering with them. And that does not speak to voter integrity, or election integrity. So another thing that I found out while I was the national last week was, and I came to speak to coordinator of elections, who reminded me that the equipment that we have right now was purchased with federal homograph grant. That means it's not just subject to a Tennessee statute, it's also subject to federal requirements. And so in your packet, I didn't give everybody a packet tonight, I just want to touch base with some of these. We're not going to look at all of it because you can sort of read yourself, but, uh, I will bring it up to, there is, um, an email in there from Andrew Dodd, who's the Assistant Coordinator of Elections, and it specifies that, um, the federal regulations that would apply to the equipment that we have specify that, um, a control system must be developed to ensure adequate safeguards to prevent loss, damage, theft of property, and any loss, damage, or theft must be investigated. It also tells us that adequate maintenance procedures must be developed to keep the property in good condition. So that is on top of what we've already dealt with in the Tennessee code. And this, again, is not anything new to know, but you will find it in there. Chairman Stephen Morris was not able to be with us tonight, but he did ask me to put together for him the codes that are relevant to ours, our election equipment. And you will notice that in that, I'm just going to reference just a few of them to, just to remind everybody. Tennessee Code annotated 26104, states that the county election commission shall secure each voting machine used in early voting to prohibit tampering, and shall also provide maximum security. Tennessee Code, uh, annotated 29104A says local authority adopting the voting machines shall have custody of them when they are not in use at an election and shall preserve and keep them in repair. That same code, uh, says local authority shall provide ample police protection against tampering before entry to voting machines after they have been prepared for and during an election, and shall provide adequate storage at all times. Um, we also see that it, uh, says the commission shall be responsible for maintaining a security election commission office and any other rooms or facilities in use during, uh, in the performance of any election. And then finally, there is a note that outside of the election period, both the county election commission and local authority have the responsibility to store the voting systems in a manner to preserve them and protect them from damage or tampering. Now, as I said, none of this is, we've been talking about this for five years. And so, um, recently, Mayor Hutcherson joined us at an election commission meeting, and we talked about some options. And we brought four options that all of y'all should have received information of this, uh, about three weeks ago. And so we had four options, and we invited everyone to come and join us to look at these options, so that if anyone had questions or anything, I made you have an opportunity to do that. Not everyone was able to, but we certainly appreciate those of you who weren't able to join us for that. Um, so, uh, after speaking to the people that did, we, the four options were the Chester County Independent Building, which is for sale, and, uh, there is an individual that has offered to build the building to our specifications on their property, and offer it to the county for a 15-year lease. There's also, um, repairs to our annex that we have where we have the elections at now, and there's also the hometown vendor mall building that's become a fable. After speaking to several folks that were able to join us that day, I got the, uh, the feeling, y'all can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that you did not feel like the independent building was an option because of the size. We really get no more size for that, and because the Brothers Preening Building hasn't been sold, it's going to limit parking. You probably don't be able to get about eight to 10 people parked down there. So no one seemed to be favorable about that. Also, no one really seemed to be excited about, um, having the building built and entering to a 15-year lease at 15, or $5,000 a month, um, for 15 years. So eliminating that, that leaves us with two options. And so those are the options I want to discuss in more detail with everybody. Okay, the first option is to make renovations to the existing annex building, public safety building. And, um, so I want us to think about that one for just a minute. Um, the, uh, the proposal was to renovate the current annex building, taking in the office and storage space that was previously occupied by the maintenance staff, um, taking in the 4H area and veterans' affairs, so that elections would occupy the entire first floor of that building. Um, humidity would have to be addressed, that is the biggest issue that we have. Um, so that, that's what we did, and I know that the mayor, this was, this was one that he had been looking at as well, considering. So, um, the pros and cons of that, we really don't know what the cost is. Uh, Mayor, have you had an opportunity to get a bid on making the changes we discussed?
No.
Well, and, and I haven't either. The only thing I did, I was able to get a quote for the garage door, which is about $6,500 to replace that. Um, the advantages to doing that, it keeps elections in the same location, and, um, the changes that we talked about making at that time would address the boundary issue, and it could at least help with the handicap accessibility. Uh, and it would allow us room for growth if we had that home building. Um, cons, there is a, you know, there's going to be a significant cash outlay upfront to try and get the changes made that need to be made. Our biggest concern is the humidity and the HBAC, and, um, I know that, and when we were talking about it, the, um, HBAC company that had come and looked at it, had some reservations and said, well, they really wouldn't know until spring, and that they didn't see a problem right now. We are in the driest time of year. Um, and you'll remember that the test was done, and we were continuing to run the dehumidifiers. So we haven't really had an opportunity to get those valid test results, but we do know that there's a problem. We have emptied the dehumidifiers repeatedly, we've seen the rust and corrosion of machines, we dealt with paper jams, we know that is a problem, and that absolutely has to be addressed before we can get into that building. Um, also, it doesn't address any issues that we have with the parking. Uh, we would not be able to move until the November election at least, if we can get everything done by that time. Um, and that gives us several months potential for, basically a year potential for damaging equipment. And that's always a concern. There's also going to be a cost to store the furnishes that we've got for about $3,000 during that time, and there's still some unknowns. We don't want to get 911, it's going to be able to move to their rebuilding, we don't want to, the 4H group is going to be able to move to their rebuilding, so there's just a lot of question marks there. Uh, we do know that we would have to, as I said, get an HBAC dehumidification system. We can take out four walls, two of those being concrete, add a wall in the garage area, and move some interior walls, replace the garage door, add an awning to cover so that there's no equipment damage during the weather. Leave the main entrance to the side of the building, and that's how we can get around the 100-foot boundary and the handicap accessibility. We need to add a security gate to the outside stair wall, replace the front glass doors, test for asbestos in the floor. Building was built about 1972, asbestos, asbestos can be a problem up to mid-'70s. So we know that there's an issue, but we certainly want to know before we start knocking out walls and floors and things like that. And then, of course, we would need to relocate 4H and the veterans' affairs building. So that is, that's an option for us, and if we can do all of this, it absolutely will beat our heads. And so we're, we're considering that. Now, because we know how long it's going to take before we can get this done, we would like to look at option number five, uh, I'm sorry, option number four, enter, and this is what, this would be the hometown mall building, hometown vendor mall. For those of you who are not familiar with it, it's down in the shopping center. Uh, it's the former Family Dollar location. And so Family Dollar is now moved into the old safety lot building, so this leaves that facility open. Um, we looked at that, and honestly, it kind of reminds me a little bit of A1 pools and the fact that it's just one big empty building. And you know, that's what we need, is one big empty building. So it's about 75 hundred square feet, and, um, we talked to them about the, the lease I can get them to discuss as a 5-year lease, but it would, the cost would be $3,000 per month with guaranteed that it would not be increased for the life of that 5-year lease. Uh, we've also asked that we have four months free rent, so that we can go in and put, make the changes that we need to make, and they seem to be receptive to that. So you're looking at, um, at having at least four months free. County expense would be mutualized, because all the maintenance would be covered, um, as, as part of the agreement. Here are pros. There's really no upfront cash outlay. We, um, we would be able to use, and, and for those of you who've never saw it, if it, when it was the vendor mall, they had those stuff. And so there's a lot of tuba floors in there and things like that. We would be able to use that wood as the frame for our walls, because we're just looking at framing of office space and things like that. So that's another expense we would not have to incur. Uh, we should be able to get in there before the March election, and that's very, very important to us right now. There'd be no storage cost. Uh, it addresses the issues with the humidity and the 100-foot boundary. The building is fully handicap accessible right now. It has two handicap parking spaces at the front door. Um, it has, uh, handicap accessible men's and women's bathrooms already in it. Um, the, it has one brand-new HBA unit, HBC unit. There is another one, it's still working fine, but it's older, and we are asking that they replace that within the first six months, and that way there would be no issue whatsoever with any kind of HBAC, it has a new roof. Uh, security cameras are already in place, we just have to wire those up, and there's already a security door and awning for equipment delivery and pickup at the back. Uh, there's ample room for growth. As I said, we can, we've got plenty of room there, and it would also allow us enough room to do city hall loading, you know, that's another one we're going to have to move. And so we could do that at this location as well. Um, because there are so many features that are already there, it frees up using our $25,000 security grant for things like security doors and alarms and things that we might not be able to use it for if we go somewhere else. Um, county would not have to pay any maintenance costs on this. The only thing we would be asked to do is we would need to secure a contract with, um, a reputable HBAC company, or actually, our county people could do it if, well, they ask that we maintain the, um, units twice a year, basically clean the holes and filters. Other than that, everything else is going to be completely covered. Um, county would continue to receive tax revenue from this, because it would still be privately owned. Uh, it's easily accessible from, uh, both East Main and from 45 bypass. It's really easy in and out, and, um, as I said, it's got a new, relatively new parking lot, it's been paved, um, it's in really good shape. Now, uh, leasing the building means that the county does not have an ownership interest in that. And I know that that is, that's a concern to me, that's really the only concern I heard from anybody that saw it, was that the county no longer has an ownership interest in this. And I, I think that's a very valid concern. But we've been down the shrug, we didn't have the money to buy a facility, we didn't have the money to build a facility. So if you can't buy and you can't build, you rent until you can. And that's kind of where we're at right now. Um, but taking actions on this, uh, this option right now, can give the county plenty of time to get a better financial position. We're not talking about doing this long-term forever. We're talking about doing it for this initial five-year lease during that term. County gets finances in order, 4H gets located, 911 gets located, has an opportunity to get the changes made that we need to make to the public safety building. And, um, and so then that also would open up in the short term of space in the courthouse for everybody to tell when they get done. And most importantly, the equipment would be secure for 2024. Um, we would not have to worry about the damage for that. The timeline would actually give us eight elections that we would not have to worry about, and then it would put us moving back into public safety building on an off-election year. So there would not be any disruption of elections when we move back. Um, in your packet, I think we just ate a proposed letter of intent relative to this space. I'd like to point out that the, uh, the late, again, the lease rate is guaranteed for five years, the only thing, make adjustments after two, they're willing to guarantee us five years on that. Um, we also take possession, if we trust to do this, of the building on December 1st, so that we can go in and make changes, build walls, that kind of thing, and we're not having rent due before April 1st of 2024. That way, we're sure we can get everything done. I know this is, y'all, y'all are already sitting here talking about elections, and I have a shame that I'm kind of sick of it too right now, to be honest with you. But we're about to embark on the biggest election that anybody that's ready is looking. As a matter of fact, we're going to have additional equipment coming in because of the anticipated turnout that we're going to have. And so we cannot go into this election year unprepared, and in all honesty, we could not be less prepared. We're prepared with everything except where do we have the election? How do we secure the equipment? And that's why I'm coming to y'all tonight, asking, I know y'all won't be again until January, and we start LA test in January 26th. So we really need a plan, and honestly, we need it now. Um, so I'm asking if, if there's any way that this commission can grant this request to enter into this agreement for the five years, knowing that this is simply an interim solution until we can get back into accounting building. Um, you know, it's, it's just one of those things, we cannot keep putting it off in, in the time of now, we've got If the time is now, we've got to address it. And the risk is just too great. First, you continue saying, we'll deal with it, we'll be dealt with everything else. We're talking about if we don't protect this equipment, we're talking about a half a million dollars. And I don't want to be the person that comes here after the March election and says, hey, y'all, our equipment's ruined. I need $500,000 and I need it right now. Because that's what it's going to make. And I don't want to do that. We have an opportunity to plan ahead and address this. And that's what I'm asking y'all to do. So if, if I can answer any questions for anyone, I'd be glad to. Otherwise, I would really appreciate serious consideration for this basically two-step plan, which is one for the five years and then the long-term, which is getting this back into the Public Safety Building.
Other way?
Yes, sir.
Is all kind of rubber, where you're showing your equipment, where is it starting from here?
Right now, we have it in the, the voting machines themselves are in an office in this courthouse. We will be moving them over within a couple of months. And we have, some of it is in our operations office, all of our pulp heads are in there. And then we do have various other equipment. And we've got about eight different locations. But the things that are so crucial are right now, they're downstairs.
Okay. And you started off talking about, have you ever lost anywhere?
Have I lost anywhere?
Yeah, well, that's what you're talking about, losing equipment. I mean, you know, you started this off talking about losing equipment or somebody tampering with it. And have, you know, have you ever had anybody tamper with it?
No, but that doesn't mean it can't happen. And that doesn't mean state citizen, we have to provide for that. That's what the law says. And we have had, as I said, we had significant paper jams. We have had some equipment back to overhaul because there's corrosion on it. If it gets corroded, our company will decertify it. When they decertify, we can't use it. And they did that because they don't want to be on national news. It was a problem in Chester County Tennessee, it's because of ESNS equipment.
Okay, one more question. What you're talking about is some were in the next 200 grand for five years?
165,000.
Okay, and then it's not going to cost us anything if we renovate it?
We, we will have to go in and put up some walls. But the wood is there. And we're basically, we're not talking about anything fancy. We're talking about just, it can't even actually, it's more like cubicles because it can't go all the way to the ceiling.
Let's just say 180 degrees, correct?
Okay.
All right, well, what if this, if we put 180 degrees?
We don't know. And that's the problem. Because we have been discussing this for a lot of time and we still haven't been. And, and my point is, we're kind of at a point where we can't just say, well, if this might work, if we had a fixed structure, I absolutely would work and we would move in, we would have. But we're coming up on, like I said, the most significant election year of your lifetime. And we just can't say, well, you know, we'll deal with it 2025.
How long would it take to find out what's going on?
I have no idea. Mayor, you've been talking to him for a while, have you, have you had, what can we add?
I was going to get a question, a construction engineer about possibly putting in that doorway. I haven't got a brush yet. Hopefully, I can get that in the next week. That being a support wall, I would go and get, and about, you know, we have to get it wrong.
And we do know, like I said, we've got the heat in there, we've got the other, the other issues that would have to be addressed. And we are giving LA testing on January 26th. So whatever we do needs to be done for January 26th.
And might you get us some cattle within 30 days?
But keep in mind, the county commission will not meet again until January.
We can always have.
Yes, Kenny.
On this lease, would anybody else have access to the building?
No. That's part, that's part of the agreement because we have to, the law says that even like housekeeping people, no one can have access to it. So we would have to have it where it's secure and no one can get to it.
But now, if we get a phone, we still have to go, we can use the building, but there's a possibility that we need it. Just because we're getting a phone doesn't mean that you're going to be able to get into the building with it, the way that it is.
Right. And as I said, the LePois, when they came and looked at it, said they really wouldn't know until spring. And I can appreciate that, but we know, like I said, we've been over there inching the dehumidifiers twice a day. We have seen the paper jams, we have dealt with the equipment being rusted. So the fact that, that somebody can say, well, they can't move it to us right now, we know that it's a problem.
Can I just bring something? Is there a basement? Or did there assist a warrant recently killed in the stairwell area, right from up there? Someone had said that there was occasionally water coming down the wall into the basement. Is that still happening? Like say the past hour, we had no rain the past month or two?
I would have been there for a little over here and asked.
Did you see any water?
The water that I've seen, it rained, it rained from heading. That would come in from the back where the jail is. And would come in from the back of jail and go towards where when Johnny was in that office, back into where Raymond's office is.
Is it having since the roof has been repaired?
If Raymond has it since, then no. Now, in my front corner, in my front corner office, I had, it comes down, there's a sunburn on the outside of the wall and would come down that wall and come in the front corner because I have to keep my UPSes. They sit up on a pedestal. And so I could keep them up because I had to have a Sarco come in.
Does that happen recently?
That is, the last time that happened has probably been, probably about a year. It happens, but it's really fairly severe, right? And so that's been a positive balance since that time. Right, yeah. Which we're in a drought now, so.
Mr. Manoff found some problems on the sidewalk where some of the mortar had gone out. And he's supposed to fix that, I don't know how long ago, in my opinion, about a year ago.
So hopefully that's the way.
I don't know about what the problem was.
This one wouldn't have any cost to that, it's a water pump cost to remodel that building, if you're correct.
That is correct. All I was able to get was, was the door.
Has there been, you may have started the building, you have other options?
No, there has not. But with the other option, we do not have a concrete block built. So the chances of that happening are much less. But no, we have not. Hoping that the HVAC save that has one new and one that's, we're going to ask to replace to redo this.
Kenny, was they considered doing a lease for less than five years? Just, you know, give us time to get this other building?
They have not seemed receptive to that. I have mentioned that. But I can certainly go back to them and ask that. And I am not opposed to it. Like I said, if the building, if the Public Safety Building was fixed today, this would be an issue. It's just we're kind of down at the wire and we don't have any other options. That's where, that's my concern. I certainly don't mind asking them if they would consider like three years or something like that. Initially, they, I think they're offset to that because they guaranteed no cost increase for the five years.
But then after that, it says 10% per year?
Yes, we have the option after five years. And honestly, when we were talking about it, I didn't really consider that because I anticipated us again being back into a county building at that.
All right, any more discussion?
Have you asked any of the other ones in that mall building about the humidity in there part of the building?
I have not. I have just been dating the building.
I would like to see what a two-year lease is. So we're going to get this one done? Well, one year, one year with the, we need to turn the other just one year with the, we need.
And I'm pretty confident we won't get a one-year lease. I'm just saying, because when we talked about it, they, they talked about how they normally would increase after two years on the maintenance and that kind of stuff. And they agreed for four or five years to not do that. So like I said, I can certainly ask, but we need to get into companies on the show, we need to show them the lease.
I don't know that you can be in this building prepared. By the time you get a little bit, go to bed, or at least.
It is very, it's concerning, like I said, if we had no way out.
I think that's a good option, coming back over there. But I, I just don't think it's going to be something that can be done in a few.
That's, like I said, that's my fear and we don't know, there's so many unknowns. The only thing we do know honestly about the annex right now is that there's a huge humidity problem. And it's, we have handicap issues, we have 100-foot boundary issues, we have a number of issues. That's the only thing we know for sure about that right now. And again, not saying that that can't be repaired, not saying that that can't be fixed for some time. It's just, you know, two months from now, I'm doing LA testing. So I'm going to have to have some resolution on what I'm going to do.
Do you think you would consider a two-year lease?
I can ask, but like I said, I think if they do, then they're going to want to make some changes to some other things like guarantee rates and things like that. And then we can come back and have to, in two years, you'll have it and then we have to renegotiate. I, I do not, I'm not pressed to go in and ask them. I would probably say at least for three years, that would get us through 2024, 2026 elections. But then, you know, we, we're going to have to have some plan for sure before 2028.
Could you negotiate this and see if we might get like a three-year lease for the same amount of money?
I can certainly ask. Absolutely.
That should be plenty of time.
I hope briefly, yes.
If you're going to go back and try to break it, go to a laser or a hat, I don't know, January?
I'm afraid so. I wouldn't be really agree on this. And then if I am able to get better terms, you know, this being the worst term, I guess, I think if we can't get three, we can get three. Or you could do special, I don't really know, y'all, I just need something for January 26th.
Well, if, if, of course, we will table this. During this time, I will try to get the process of public rights on the construction issues on the Public Safety Building. While she's checking to see if, if, at least differential on the bridge. Is that available with everyone?
Is it possible? Is there a meeting? Can we raise that again?
Once you get that everybody to work with you, somehow, it's my office.
I'll be the guy leaving out there.
So we could just anticipate, untangling this, are you talking a special call, are you talking just doing it January?
If we reset and re-agree, and then we can.
Possibly.
And then it all comes together and comes down motion. I mean, we have.
So, right, can we consider those these hours, please?
Absolutely, isn't that fair? We're fixing to make lots of changes to our election day voting locations, that is going to be one of them. And we will be using that on election day. However, it's not a long-term solution for them to, to, versus having their early voting in the long term.
So you did make with Mr. Ross.
I, I've been talking to a couple of different people with the nation board. And we are going to be moving, intentionally moving our junior high building, our patient to the old.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to allow at least two public comments, which we have one person that's already stood.
Thank you. Thank you. I can ask you a lot of that. Has anyone done a step, well, went in and set the temperature from downstairs and upstairs the same to see if it would be on that moisture? I know, I worked for a homeowner for a number of years and he had his house on one end, a different temperature from the other end. I had a, a big problem with moisture, which, I mean, you know, it would solve that problem if you could figure out that, if that was the difference. It wouldn't solve the other problem, sorry.
And I think of all those sign-ons, one of the things that was mentioned with the air conditioning company is like, when it's a comfortable temperature inside. And like most of our problems, the biggest problems we have actually with here in our installations, where there is you are. And it's so hot outside, it's good inside, but there's really, you know, no way to, to regulate that, unfortunately.
He does know this, West Carolina State, about 95% to 97% humidity. So you're going, you're going to get water in them humidifier and I don't hear a word yourself, okay?
Well, that, that's true. That's, that's something that we're certainly up against. And so we, we just need to do everything we can to stack this up later.
At this time, we'd like to allow one more public comment, if someone would like to stand and make a comment about this. If not, we will, something that we're supposed to light a torch. We're going to give you everything nice and soon. To finish on this meeting for, you know, Ms. Manoff.
Hi, guys. A housekeeping thing. If the trial error are wrong, so I might not have everything right and email sub-owners as well as addresses. I have added a contact list for each condition in your packet. If you could look over that list and look over your registration. And Walter comes to me after the meeting and I'll look right at it. My plan is to send an email out in my letter packet to have one either in the office to you or after commissioning you at your discretion. I want to make this easy for everybody. That's all I have.
I'd like to open this up, I think, on the game one for any other reasons, like my public comment. We would like to allow the public comments.
They weren't submitted for policies committed to the budget committee for revision, they weren't approved by the committee.
Do we need to go ahead with, are we motioning approval then to the committee?
We would, we would just.
Do you want to explain about the two policy?
Folks, one of those revised Chester County purchase order policy. In the full paragraph, we are saying that the finance office, we are, we have a purchase order request coming in. We'll submit the purchase order for approval. After the purchase order is approved, the finance office will give the authorized purchaser a purchase order number. What we are doing here is implementing the full approval process so that the mayor is the county chief detective officer, chief financial officer, you know, what is being spent. This will possibly delay the getting a purchase order for about up to a day. We have the procedures in place, so we will look to take it longer than that. Again, though, it completes the purchase order cycle as the cabinet notice that was being spent. The other provision was in the Chester County Tennessee Finance Office General Policies and Procedures. There was, in the first paragraph, uh, first few numbers there, there was a reference to the Beyonce office instead of the finance office, technical revision. And then the, on page two, the purchasing procedures competitive bids. The threshold was changed to fifteen thousand. You noted on that several once ago, and the policy is revised from that, so you have two chances.
Have a motion in a second, but this did go through, it was a department, and I did. So we do have a, uh, motion in a second. So I'm going to ask if there'd be any more discussion on this, please, subject. If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Also, the purchasing, uh, committee, uh, opened some grant, uh, bids this week. One being the, uh, bid on the body scanner to go in at the criminal justice center. We had one bidder on that, and they was accepted and awarded front bid. So they also put the money in, they put it in Madison County and Martin County. And also in the other bid, the sheriff's department, um, they had a bid on, uh, about resurcising and drainage problem, which we got two bids on that, which they identified that they did not bid on the same specifications. So we are still undergoing that, uh, making a decision, but it's a great thing to do there. So we will be meeting again on that subject. Also, the health department, we, uh, T O N will be, uh, doing their renovations. So, uh, just for some information. Next on the agenda is the notice.
Yes, sir, we have four notice applications. Chris Creighton Ballard, Jay Johnson, Rita Murphy, and Sherry Tobias. Not sure if you heard.
We have most approved, Commissioner Dean Grillo and Secretary Commissioner Jerry Martin. Any discussion about the notice? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we close, before we recess this, until we get back to the information we have, does anyone have any comment? I'm sorry about it being so long, but I think we can go with the lawsuit.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like clarification on the Chester County holiday list that was in effect.
Holiday dinner?
It is.
Please.
The holiday list.
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to know which of these days, it's got Christmas tree lighting, county's Christmas party, Christmas parade, like it's a holiday for that day.
No, it's not a holiday. I was just filling up the event on that day.
Okay, now, you go down here to, uh, say, January, December twenty-ninth, which is a Friday. And January first, which is the Monday, the following. I don't know, I don't, one day for New Year's, when, especially if you got a weekend, twenty-nine, I say. We don't think of one time.
I'm sorry that wasn't there on that day, up there, it's twenty-nine. I meant to go back and read it.
There's some other days that I think was there as well.
That one, as far as I know, I was going to put that out this week, uh, with twenty-nine, that was, I need to put that. As far as I know, the rest of them should be all ready.
So you're saying that you're going to take a half day.
These are the same holidays we took for last year.
Oh, I understand. I'm, I'm, yeah, I understand, but I'm saying, you're taking a half day before Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving, because according to C pass, there's set dates that should be for holidays. And it's in the state statute. And also it says that there was a lawsuit, um, that happened in, um, I can't remember what town, but, uh, it's the Wright vs. Blenoff. And it says that the office was closed the day after Thanksgiving, which is not a, uh, state holiday. And someone needed to file a, um, an appeal. And because there was someone there to, for them to file that appeal, the courts wouldn't recognize that they refused to extend the time. So there was a lawsuit because of that, but there's, there's several days that I feel like we should be open because the taxpayers are paying our, or their salary, same with me for the bank, when my customers are paying my salary. I think we need to be open for them, and I'm all about paying holidays. I want my time off, just like anyone else does, but when you're talking about a half day before Thanksgiving and the day of Thanksgiving, then we're looking at.
Maybe some less of the discretion.
But I'm just saying, it's not state statute. We're not, we're not, we're not, like, even that. And I was, I was only, uh, personnel committee last year, and I'm sure that's why I was saying, oh, because I brought this up then, but that's, I mean, that's fine.
Um, were you making a motion to change the holidays?
Well, no, I'm saying, I think we need to discuss it. Because there's several days that are being taken off when offices should be open. And I'm not saying that everyone should be there. And some of these days, whether it's the day of Thanksgiving, it's not a, a holiday according to state statute, but my recommendation in the, uh, personnel committee meeting a few months ago was that maybe you have someone, um, that's on call, and you hope that you're going to be closed on this day. And then have on the, the, uh, your door, or if you can, get it to the courthouse, on the courthouse doors, that whatever, whoever's talking about, who's saying, who's here, Kathy's office is going to be closed the day of Thanksgiving. But in case of emergency, which I don't require that, but there are some offices that they do. You can contact this number, maybe this holiday Kathy's on call. This holiday Kathy's on call. I'm just using them as, uh, before it comes off. And so that we are covered if there were a lawsuit or somebody needed, but does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll check on that, but right now, we have it, we're within the control of the, uh, directors or the public official, uh, like.
I understand, but we're not, um, stacking state statute. And then, yeah, there's some departments that have to work, that because these other offices are closed, they have to pay out more.
Okay.
Well, I missed that, I missed that, the pocket, we discussed this in the first meeting. And it said, C pass told us that any other county offices get off, I had to pay out, I got fifty-six paper. So if, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I like to pay, I like to pay top of the list. If you take a half day, we got to pay that, because we need to. So on those, where this department is, uh, ruling, or, uh, the season is, except the department is. When everybody else does, that's what I got.
So by closing, we're costing the county more money, the taxpayers more money. And we're opening ourselves to lawsuits when it's not one of the days that's set in the statute. And I'm not saying that, I, I realize it's become a passive. I'm just saying, we're not in accordance with the statute.
Any more discussion about my holidays?
And there's several days, there's the Friday before Christmas and the day after Christmas. So you're talking about two and a half days for Christmas and a day, two and a half days for Thanksgiving.
But that's the discretion of the department here, they have that. The people still let us go home, I'm sure.
But that office is charged.
They, they say, they'll say.
They say I'm just saying.
But that's the discretion of the department here.
I'm just saying that it's not state statute.
It's good now, for the future, we will have a meeting real soon, and have this, and we might change that for a minute. Any more discussions?
There's also people that go out of town on holidays, and has family, has their own.
Take vacation.
I don't have a vacation, because I work time.
Well, I, I have paid my vacation, I like that as well, but let me say this also, um, I don't know if it's going to be changed within the personnel committee, because the personnel committee consists of the department heads. So.
That's what it's always been until last year.
I'm just saying, it's not going to be changed because it consists of the department heads. Unless we say, there's a mixture, that's not right, and it's not right.
I'm not saying.
Okay, we don't have more discussion than this, a lot of people, we don't have their opinion being, and discuss.
May I say one more thing, please? Also, again, the people that are speaking up work for the county, so we know how they're going to vote.
More time.
So I'm.
But you work for the county. But you work for the county.
I don't get paid a time. I don't get paid overtime.
Okay, we will discuss this later.
It's kind of a work, it's kind of a, it's a, everybody else, everybody else is mine, it's a priority.
I have a motion.
What do you think, Robert?
I'm like, oh, it's, it's, it's.
What do you think, Robert, you have a statement?